So a town outside Detroit, Michigan banned Pride and trans flags on government buildings in June. The ban, which was passed by unanimous city council prohibited the flying of any religious, ethnic, racial, political, or sexual orientation group flags on the city's public properties. The mayor, Amir Khalib, stated that the ban is not targeting any particular group, but this move followed the rising religious fuel tensions over rainbow flag near City Hall.
Well, welcome back to Asmith Podcast. I am your host, Kimberly McNabb.
And I'm Barrett McNabb. The motion does allow for flying of five different flags on the public property, the US flag, thank goodness for that, the Michigan state flag, the city of Hamtrack flag, the prisoner of war flag, which I commend them for, and a unique flag representing the nations from which many of the Hamtrack citizens hail from, which are primarily Middle Eastern and Muslim nations.
And this decision was particularly significant as it came during the first Pride month since Hamtrack city council and mayoral post included all Muslim officials. LGBTQ plus 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 residents in Hamtrack have expressed feelings of betrayal over the council's decision. They had hoped that the city's progressiveness would extend to supporting Pride flags. Former council city member Katrina Stackpool, who identifies as gay, mentioned that they welcomed and supported the Muslim community when they arrived in Hamtrack, and they expected the same in return.
That's, that's really interesting because, you know, a few years ago, there were a lot of municipalities, cities, counties, and even some states that were worried that majority Muslim majority populations would start implementing and taking over government and implementing Shia law, and, you know, which is based on Islam. And so a lot of municipalities and counties passed laws that said, hey, look, you know, under no way, shape, or form are we going to allow Shia law to be part of, part of our legal system. And so there was, you know, this epiphany that I had, and again, this is, this is probably four or five years ago, and it was kind of this, this dream that there was an elevated court in session and on the panel of the justices were Muslim majority justices. And they were trying a Hasidic Jew, they were trying a gay female, they were trying, you know, other minority groups, and they were passing judgment. And in this, in this dream that I had, it was, but we supported you, the people were saying that we supported you, we welcomed you with, with open arms, and the justices respond, and we thank you for that, but now it's our turn. And, you know, it's, it's just kind of interesting that four or five years later, we have a city council that is 100% Muslim, and we, they are, you know, making banning, you know, certain things that, that protected them, people that welcomed them into, with open arms, and the tables have, have certainly turned.
Yeah, people make the mistake that other people also shared their values. The council consists completely of Muslims, and Muslims do not believe in homosexuality.
Yeah, and, you know, you have to be very careful about that, you know, as, as a foreign area officer and traveling back and forth to the Middle East multiple times, there's, there's two big things. There's, you know, drugs and homosexuality. And whether that's, it's right, wrong, indifferent, that's just their culture. And so it's very difficult to impress American values of acceptance for everybody onto, you know, other countries' culture. That's what makes their countries unique. And I remember getting a visa in the Saudi Arabian embassy that was in UAE for me to go to Riyadh and visit Saudi Arabia. And in the waiting room of where you get your visas, there is a huge painted banner on the, on the wall that's above the glass, that, you know, like if you go into a DMV and everybody's, or a bank, everybody's behind glass and things like that. Well, the workers for the embassy and the consulate were behind glass, but right above their glass, it says, "Death to drug dealers." Okay, so, I mean, they're, they're letting you know in advance that if you come into the country and you deal drugs, it's going to be the death penalty. And the same thing goes for homosexuality. I mean, these are countries where they still stone people to death, and, and that's actually a thing. And they still do beheadings in public squares. I mean, it's, it's still a thing. And so, you know, it's just, you know, it's hard for us to, to, to really impart our values on that particular region. And so you would have to think that we're a melting pot, and when people come into the country and they don't necessarily assimilate, they're going to bring their culture and their values with them as well. And so this is a, you know, an exact representation of, of that.
And with seven million illegal immigrants, probably not going to need to assimilate.
Yeah, it's going to be difficult for them to come in and, you know, ultimately what we want is, we're, we're a nation of immigrants, legal immigrants, and we did, you know, expect Italian Americans and Irish Americans and African Americans and that are coming in now, European Americans, Asian Americans, to assimilate.
And share our values.
Yeah, share our values, and again, we're a melting pot, but we still have values that, that need to be common amongst all, all of our citizens. But, you know, the, the flag ban in Hamtrack has already shown signs of selective enforcement. When Mayor Khalib claims that it was about maintaining neutrality, he allowed the Pan-African flag during the Juneteenth celebration, and it seems a little contradictory. Despite the flag flown on public property should not have any religious, ethnic, racial, political, or sexual orientation group flags, the Pan-African flag is a racial flag, and is thus, you know, the LGBTQ plus community feels that this ban kind of singles them out for discrimination. And I can kind of see their point.
Yeah, well, the mayor justified it by, justified the allowing of the Pan-African flag is that the Juneteenth event was agreed upon long before the ban was voted on. The organizers taped the flag to the post of a park pavilion instead of flying it in a parade or putting it on a pole. And the mayor did state that such displays would not be allowed after this Juneteenth event.
So this is kind of just, you know, we're going to allow it this one time, and then we're not going to allow it anymore?
Right.
Okay.
But this is not an isolated ban either. In recent years, many school boards, including two in California, have debated banning the LGBT plus 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 Pride flags from schools citing concerns about favoritism. Civil rights advocates argue that such flags are protected expression under the Constitution. Jay Blotcher, co-founder of the Gilbert Baker Foundation, an LGBTQ advocacy group named after the creator of the Pride flag, noted that the real focus of these bans appears to be on the Pride flag, with other flags also being banned as part of this effort. So other flags are being banned. On one hand, yes, we have the First Amendment with free speech.
Sure.
However, it can be argued that when having to explain to children what the rainbow flag stands for, then comes the explanation of what gay, lesbian, L M N O P mean. Our son, when he was about four, saw a rainbow flag in a neighbor's yard and asked, "Mommy, what country is that for? And why do we have the United States flags, but they get to have the fun rainbow flag?"
Yeah, you know, because kids love rainbows. But, you know, the, the importance of flags, you know, is, is ancient as, as nation-states. I mean, being able to, to, to have a flag or a family coat of arms or, or a city-state flag, you know, from antiquity, it's, it's, it's part of, part of your, your identity. And, and flags mean, mean different things. And, you know, we have the United States flag, and we, you know, it's the highest flag that, that flies. But, you know, we've, we've had instances, especially here in Houston, Texas, about, I want to say it was 25, 30 years ago, there was a group of high schoolers that were, had come across the border, they had, you know, were attending public schools, and it was, made the news, and they took down the American flag and flew the Mexican flag in its place above a Houston public school. And, you know, it caused quite a bit of controversy because it could be considered that this is treason or even an act of war by, by taking a government building and replacing the American flag with the Mexican flag. And I'll be honest, I don't know exactly what happened to those, those teenagers that, that did that. But we just, just a few days ago, we have, you know, illegal immigrants from Venezuela that are coming in. Now Biden has, has granted, you know, temporary amnesty to, or not amnesty, but temporary protections and work, work rights visas for about 100,000 Venezuelans that are, that are here. But, but just a few days ago, illegal immigrants from Venezuela raised a Venezuelan flag on the United States properties. They were coming over. It was an island in the middle of the Rio Grande River, but it, it does belong to the United States. And, and so, you know, here we are, we're in Texas, we're in the United States, and we're having, you know, foreign illegal immigrants raising their country of origin, origins flags on our soil. And, you know, it's, it's a problem. So the city council recognizing that, that flags mean things is, you know, is, is just really interesting. But, but, you know, getting back to the rainbow flag, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to explain to children sometimes. And, you know, you want children to be as, as innocent as they can be for as long as you, as they can. I mean, they're, they're children. They don't need to know any type of sexual orientation. They don't need to know anything. They just need to be able to-
Just playground. That should be their whole world.
Yeah.
Playground.
Doing the playground.
And Legos. So, you know, I was wondering, what is the origin of the rainbow flag? The original gay Pride flags were first flown at the San Francisco Gay Freedom Day Parade on June 25th, 1978.
That's quite some time ago.
Yeah. Before this iconic moment, the Nazis had used the pink triangle to identify and stigmatize men interned as homosexuals in concentration camps. Wanting to move away from this symbol of oppression, the community sought a new emblem.
You can't blame them.
Yeah. Creator Gilbert Baker chose the rainbow motif because the rainbow has a spectrum of colors and like there is a spectrum of human sexuality. While some have speculated that Baker may have been inspired by the Judy Garland song, "Over the Rainbow," Baker himself mentioned that his inspiration came more from the Rolling Stones song, "She Is a Rainbow."
Okay.
There are Christian groups who are trying to reclaim the rainbow flag, the rainbow, because a rainbow was God's promise to not flood the earth again. But I doubt they're going to have much success reclaiming it because it has been used for 45 years.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's kind of a double edged sword, I'd say. I mean, on one hand, they're displaying only the, the flags of the government, you know, from the city council, but on the other, they're, they're being exclusionary by selectively using their country of origin compilation flag, yeah. And so, I mean, it's, it's, you know, not everyone in this city came from a Muslim country. So it's, it's kind of like they're assimilating, but they're kind of not quite doing it. It doesn't seem as inclusive as, as it could be. I think if they had just stopped at the prisoner of war flag, you know, going down the order of merit list, they probably would have been a little bit better off.
Yeah.
But that concludes this segment of Asmith Podcast. Please stay tuned after these messages.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for listening. If you enjoy our show with all the stories we share, we would love your support.
And it's as easy as clicking that subscribe or follow button. This will ensure you never miss an episode and keeps us bringing you these important stories. Your support makes a huge difference. Thank you so much for being part of our podcast family.
Thanks, and keep tuning in. All that sparkles does not shine.
Let us confess our faith today in the words of the Sparkle Creed. I believe in the non-binary God whose pronouns are plural. I believe in Jesus Christ, their child, who wore a fabulous tunic and had two dads and saw everyone as a sibling child of God. I believe in the rainbow spirit who shatters our image of one white light and refracts it into a rainbow of gorgeous diversity.
Sounds like some kids are not buying into this.
They're smarter than the adults.
As numerous, creative, and resilient as patches on the AIDS quilt, whose feet are grounded in mud and whose eyes gaze at the stars in wonder. I believe in the calling to each of us that love is love is love. So beloved, let us love. I believe, glorious God, help my unbelief. Amen.
It sounds like a fallen angel wrote that. I'll be honest. That's, 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 wow.
Yeah. Well, welcome to Asmith Podcast. I am your host, Kimberly.
And I'm Barrett. So how, how did this come about? I know this did not come from some hippie commune in California. The Sparkle Creed was drafted back in June 2021 by Rachel Smalls Stokes, a queer identifying minister of the United Church of Christ. Small Stokes explained in its backstory, "I was a voice to texting the Apostles' Creed to a colleague, and it translated as 'The Sparkle Creed.' I decided that's exactly what we need for Pride Month."
I thought the autocorrect changing Fs to Dux was bad enough. I heard this a few months ago, and probably like you, I had a hard time processing it.
Yeah.
But I have been a little disappointed by some of really well-known and very intelligent podcasters' responses.
Yeah, bewildered facial expressions are mildly entertaining, but what makes this outlandish, to say the least?
Well, I could say a lot on this, especially relating to its fallacies back to this thing called the Bible, but I've narrowed it down to just five sparkles, as I call them.
Just only five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I could say a lot on this, especially relating to its fallacies back to this thing called the Bible, but I have managed to narrow it down to just five sparkles, as I call them.
Only five, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I love how they start by calling the Father non-binary, but then they say that Jesus has two dads. Which is it? Is he non-binary or a male, so he can be the Father? This acid-induced theology is so convoluted. And regarding rainbow of gorgeous diversity, in Revelation 7:9, it says, "A great multitude that no one could count from every nation, tribe, people, and language stands before the throne of God and the Lamb, singing praise." And to me, this verse means praise of God, not praise of ourselves. So what God cares about here are two things, is that one, you're human.
Right.
You're His creation, and two, that you worship Him. That's it.
That's kind of the whole theme of, of the Bible.
Yeah. And then they also mention AIDS quilt. I don't know about you, but I had to Google this one. According to Wikipedia, the AIDS quilt is a memorial to celebrate the lives of people who have died of AIDS-related causes. So what is supposed to be a holy dedication to God, once again, our narcissism, Dylan Mulvaney-style, has made us mention a large piece of community folk art.
And it is kind of interesting, I think, that only one disease is mentioned. I mean, it didn't-
Yeah, let's go down the list.
It wasn't tuberculosis, there wasn't, you know, an addendum to where we're adding COVID, there wasn't the plague, you know, things like that. I mean, so-
Or even COVID.
Yeah, exactly.
But we're in church to worship God. Again, the end. They go on to say, "Love is love is love." I think this is a mutilation of the word love. Maybe what they mean is lust and desire.
Could be.
And then, you know, it ends in what could be a faint glimmer of self-awareness. The author of the creed seems to admit that they really do not believe in the Christian faith by saying, "Help my unbelief." Now, what is the point of all this? It's a creed. The point of a creed is, is about confessing the truth and, you know, believing in God. And this creed is just affirming ourselves with a bunch of buzzwords, and, and it's turning transgenderism into a political movement or even a religion. And, you know, churches are bringing about these things to be more accessible to the community or more relevant. But it's really a mockery.
Yeah, it kind, it kind of is. I mean, when you, when you look at, you know, theology, and it doesn't really matter which religion that you're, that you're talking about. A lot of, you know, religions, whether it's Judaism or Christianity or Islam or Hinduism, you know, Buddhism, take, take, take an ancient religion, and to just arbitrarily mix it up seems a little, a little unorthodox. I mean, I-
Well, where do you draw the line?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the, the big thing when, when Martin Luther nailed his, his documents to the tree and outside the town square, and, and you have the Protestant faith, you know, kind of fracturing off Catholicism. You know, the difference there was is, is to say that you don't need the Pope, you don't need a priest, or you don't have to be in the cathedral in order to talk to God.
Right. God wants a relationship with you, and there should, you know, it's kind of like playing a game of telephone. It needs to be direct.
Yeah, exactly. And, and so, you know, to, to have that be the monumental shift from Catholicism into the Protestant, you know, it, it's not that big a leap. It's not that big a leap. This seems that it's a, it's a, it's standing it, the religion on its head, and really kind of, as you said, making a mockery of it.
Yeah. I don't recall the verse in, I believe it's Revelation, but it basically says, "Anything coming after this is not a true part of the Bible."
Yeah, you know, it's, it's interesting. It's interesting. When I was in Morocco, I was talking to one of the embassy employees, and we, you and I had just gotten back from our trip to Israel, where we had an amazing time, beautiful, beautiful country. We got to go to Haifa, Tel Aviv, Jerusalem, got to go all around the Sea of Galilee. We had a private tour, and we stopped at the locations that, that Jesus did his miracles. And so it was, it was amazing to see this as not only a pilgrimage, but a, a historical record of, of using the Bible as a historical document as well as a religious document. And we got back and I was, we'd actually, so let me back up. We'd gone to the Temple Mount and where the, the, you know, where Mohammed, according, ascended to, to heaven and, and met a bunch of prophets along the way, including Moses and Jesus, and, and came back down. And so I was, I was explaining to this embassy employee who, who was a Moroccan, and so he was hired, hired by the embassy. And US embassies do that, they hire local nationals to, to work in the embassy. And he was Muslim. And so we got, kind of got to be talking about it, and he asked me if I believed all of that happened. And I said, you know, it's, it's, I do believe all of that happened. I mean, Jesus walked the earth and He, He did miracles. Moses, you know, did miracles and, and, and got the Jews out of Egypt and helped found, you know, Israel, you know, through obviously multiple kings and, and conflicts, you know, throughout millennia. But still, he said, well, you know, the, the Quran said that, that, you know, God came down and said, "There's no other religions after this." And I said, "Well, that's kind of interesting because the Bible says the same thing." And Mohammed had his epiphanies 700 some odd years after the death of, of Jesus Christ. And, you know, interestingly, when you look at the Mormon religion, you know, they found, and I'm not an expert on, on religion, but they found these, these discs, you know, in North America, and they've, you know, it's God's word on, on these, on these discs. And, and so again, he said, "Well, you know, that's, that can't be a religion because it came after Islam and, and God, you know, sealed the deal on Islam." And again, I re-brought up the, the fact that, well, the Bible says the same thing, that all religions after this are, are false. So, you know, it, it, you know, who's right? I mean, it's obviously up to interpretation, but I would have to say the sparkle portion is, is going down the wrong path.
Well, thank you for joining us on Asmith Podcast, and have a great day. Hi, everyone. Thank you for listening. If you enjoy our show with all the stories we share, we would love your support.
And it's as easy as clicking that subscribe or follow button. This will ensure you never miss an episode and keeps us bringing you these important stories. Your support makes a huge difference. Thank you so much for being part of our podcast family.
Thanks, and keep tuning in. No, that is not our intro music. It is applause that one might hear instead of hand claps at a socialist convention or at a Democratic presidential campaign speech. Welcome back to Asmith Podcast. I am Kimberly McNabb, and I am joined by my husband Barrett.
We're continuing our series on presidential candidates, and this time we're discussing a Democrat candidate, Marianne Williamson. She's an author, a speaker, and a spiritual leader who's making her second run for the presidency. Let's take a closer look at her background and key stance on issues, strengths and weaknesses, and see what sets her apart. So let's watch her video from her website.
I'm Marianne Williamson, and when I was growing up, America had a vibrant middle class. The average American worker had decent benefits, could afford a home, could afford a car, could afford a yearly vacation, could afford for one member of the couple to stay home if they wished, and could afford to send their kids to college. But over the last 50 years, there's been a massive transfer of wealth to the tune of $50 trillion, from the bottom 90% of Americans to the top 1%, decimating America's middle class. We all owe President Biden a debt of gratitude for defeating President Trump in 2020. But with the things that they're going to be throwing at us in 2024, we need to submit to the American people an agenda of fundamental economic reform, universal healthcare, tuition-free colleges at state colleges and universities, higher education, including tech schools, paternity and maternity leave, free childcare, and a guaranteed living wage. These are things that are considered moderate positions in every other advanced democracy. But in the United States, people have been trained to expect too little. The American people have been played. What the Democratic Party should do is to truly return to the principles of Franklin Delano Roosevelt, not just alleviate people's suffering, but offer them genuine economic reform, not just help people survive in an unjust system. The Democratic Party should end an unjust system. Washington DC, with a few brave exceptions, is filled with two major categories of leaders, those who don't even care about all the suffering that's going on out there, and those who do not have the moral courage to fix it. Let me in there. I will. I'm Marianne Williamson, and I approve this- I'm Marianne Williamson, and I approve this message.
Well, Chris Christie, even Marion, has has a has a a video that has some inspirational music and and some talking points. So let's get your team after it. But but yeah, so that was that was that was okay. I mean, there's there's things in there. You know, there's
She actually said her name in like some candidates.
She said who she was. She said why she was running. You know, she had some good talking points. I mean, you know, some who who doesn't want to help the middle class. So that's a, you know, that's a great buzzword to use. But, you know, there are some things that, you know, universal healthcare and and things like that, who pays for that? But still, I thought it was well done. It was present, which is which is a huge a huge plus on her her side. I don't know, honestly, I don't know how she's polling right now, but but, you know, probably really not not that high. But still, Marianne Williamson, she started as a spiritual leader and an author of self-help books. Her journey into politics is marked by a commitment to bringing about change. And clearly, we heard about some of that change in her video. One of her key platforms is the idea of an economic bill of rights, which includes a living wage, quality healthcare, and cost-free higher education, affordable housing, and then wrap it all up, a clean environment.
Williamson has been a vocal advocate for tackling climate change head on. She pledged to cancel projects like the Willow Project, work towards a clean environment, and move away from fossil fuel extraction.
Well, on the topic of criminal justice reform, Williamson aims to bring down crime rates and end the prison industrial complex. She's also supportive of financial regulations, advocating for measures like the restoration of the Glass-Steagall Act to separate commercial from investment banking.
Another significant aspect of her platform is LGBTQIA rights. Williamson supports transgender individuals using the bathroom and participating in sports teams according to their gender identity.
Well, while some stances align with others and Democratic candidates, there are key differences that make her stand out. She's not in favor of a blank check for war in Ukraine, and she proposes reining in corporations through regulation as a means to tackle inflation instead of taxation.
And her strengths include her effective use of social media platforms like TikTok, as well as having her own podcast. This can certainly help her connect with a younger audience. Additionally, her background as a public speaker and author makes her a skilled communicator.
However, it's essential to consider the potential weaknesses. Marianne Williamson lacks political experience, which can raise concerns about her ability to navigate complex policy issues.
Well, that's true. And some critics point out that while she outlies ambitious programs, she does not always provide clear details on how to fund them.
It's going to be through seance.
Additionally, her association with new age spirituality and her comparing the Israel-Palestine conflicts to Avatar, to James Cameron himself, has led to skepticism from many people.
Well, there's another challenge on the horizon. With some speculating she might not have the opportunity to showcase her ideas with there not being a Democrat debate. You know, the Democrat Party has has said that Joe Biden is their nominee and that they're not going to host any debates. And really, I I see that as as just, you know, messing with the democratic process. I mean, let let people decide. They just it's it's absolutely wrong. But with without there being a Democrat debate, making it difficult difficult for her to differentiate herself from President Biden and RFK Jr. And so it's just going to be really hard. She's going to have to make the rounds. I haven't heard her as maybe you have, I don't know, but I haven't heard her making the rounds as much as RFK Jr., who's really pounding the pavement.
He's everywhere.
So, I mean, he's he's trying to do a, you know, a good job. But, you know, we'll see what happens with her. But like I said, she at least showed up to the party with a with a campaign video. And so that's, you know, already, you know, a positive note. I just don't think she's going to go anywhere. There's there's just not a lot of, now, maybe in her inner circles in California, she's, you know, getting some buzz, but I just don't see her elevating herself on the national stage.
Well, that's it, folks. Thanks for tuning in and stay informed. Hi, everyone. Thank you for listening. If you enjoy our show with all the stories we share, we would love your support.
And it's as easy as clicking that subscribe or follow button. This will ensure you never miss an episode and keeps us bringing you these important stories. Your support makes a huge difference. Thank you so much for being part of our podcast family.
Thanks, and keep tuning in.